Introduce yourself on stage.
Let's welcome the first woman is our guest. And now we have another entertainment. Another piece of entertainment by Tishak Lax. We are three young men who have managed to master in the musical book. Oh, sorry, but there are three of them today. Two of them who have managed to master music as well as acting. Let's welcome Tishak Lax.
Our drama is an orientation at university away for me. So you've got another drama who actually are flat tire. So we're going to play a concert with you here. We hope you enjoy it when you could start back up. This is another song for high altitude. So you just clap for us in here, you have to clap. Yeah, yeah. And if you keep clapping, the Lord will support you.
Let's give it up again for the Tishak Lax who had four people. And now we have a young man who is the vice president of policy advocacy and a member of the Commonwealth Youth Council. He's a young man who advocates for females and males to learn the same thing about health issues so that they can understand each other better. Please help me in welcoming the independent senator, Mr Nikolai Edwards.
First of all, let me just say to the triplets, I think that should be a part of the act. As I was sitting down here, see that your drummer is running late and then he just rolls in. Now, first of all, all footballers observed, good evening, everyone. Now, it is indeed my pleasure to be here to speak on this very important topic, especially when it comes to men's role in advocating for women and girls. Now, right off the bat, something struck me while I was listening to the prayers early on. And I want to start off on that point. Now, to the religious leader who is from the Hindu community, he said something. And if you're a feminist and if you really advocate for women, a part of you inside may have just gasped. And that was that one of the things he called on us to do was, especially as women, is to respect yourself and respect your male counterpart. And that may reduce violence against women. So I want to start off on that point. We have a perception when it comes to a woman's responsibility in protecting herself. And a lot of times we feel as if a woman does not carry herself in a particular way or does not do things in a particular manner, then once she follows things the right way, she will no longer have to suffer violence or crime or anything. But nothing is further from the truth. It does not matter if a woman wears a short skirt or a blouse that is see through or she presents herself as a wajah. No man, as well as woman, has any right to disrespect her in any which way. And I understand where you're coming from, but at the same time, we continue in society to say certain things and to not understand the consequences of the things that we're seeing. And we're all here honestly this evening to learn, each and every one of us, to learn and to understand better. So I would appreciate and I would hope that you take this in the best way as I'm presenting it. We will talk, never mind. Right, so I started off very much involved in youth affairs. And that is my number one cause, ensuring that young people in Trinidad and Tobago globally as well have a voice. Because for far too long, young people continue to be sidelined and marginalized. And things have changed, but we still have much further to go. And it is in addressing the issues relative to young people that I realized that there is some intersectionality taking place when it comes to a lot of the issues and causes facing us today. And one of them is how we treat our women and girls in society. And when you even listen to some of the conversations from our leaders and persons in authority and we simply pass it off as pick on, we're doing ourselves an injustice. Because you have many young persons listening and looking on. And if persons in society in holding high positions and office continue to make reckless statements, then what can you expect from the generations coming up? So we have to stop the lip service and take action. And by simply standing in solidarity for the he or she campaign is one way in which you can make a statement. Because you're showing that women and girls need to be respected. And then in society, there comes the issue, well, you only want to advocate for women and this, that and the other. But the truth of the matter is that, as was mentioned earlier, we have to look at the privileges that have been afforded to different groupings in society. And men have occupied the majority of the positions, have benefited greatly from being a man. And now we must look to our women folk and understand the problems and the issues that they face and bring them up because we've been putting them down for too long. When it comes to issues of domestic violence, we look at these things and we think, well, hey, a lot of times that's husband and wife business and let me stay out of that. But no, that's everybody's business. We should be teaching each other that those things are not to be tolerated whatsoever. And it's how you train your children in one step. It's our education system as well. Because you have children spending the majority of their day in a school where they're being taught pure academics. But what about citizen life and their role as a member of society? What about health and family life education? How well are we doing in those areas? We still continue to have a bit of discomfort, well, a lot of discomfort when it comes to the sexual and reproductive health component of HFLI. And why is that? We're seeing sex on television. We're hearing it spoken about in all these late night radio programs locally. We're seeing it in magazines and everywhere we turn. But why can't we have a constructive conversation when it comes to these issues? So it's time that we reflect as a society and take stock of what we have been doing to one another in terms of the language, in terms of the actions. When you look at music, when you listen to music as well, we want to palm it off as just being our culture. Do we understand what our culture is? Because I don't think the culture that I belong to in Trinidad and Tobago is one that advances violence and that advances that you can do anything to a woman and get away with it. How many times have you hearing in soccer music or any kind of music, they're advocating, ask permission first before you take the wine. A tip in our wine. Yeah? So it's these things that we see. Today, I was even listening to a song and I heard this line that really almost threw me off my seat. Burn your back like a paraplegic. Where are we going? We have to really take stock of the things that are put out there. Times are changing, people are more aware. We have social media at our fingertips. We need to be using these things in a responsible manner to get the messages across. And one of the greatest messages that we can put out or receive is having respect for one another. Now, in the introduction, one of the things that was mentioned was in terms of me being an advocate for equal education, both male and female, when it comes to HFLI and things of that nature. And how that came about is that I was invited to speak on gender at Afet, the Association of Female Executives of Trinidad and Tobago. And a question arose and I put my point forward as, I believe that when it comes to sexual and reproductive health and education, both male and female should benefit from the same type of education. We should not be segregating females and males thinking that we're supposed to teach them different things. You sit both of them in the room so that at the end of that, a man, a boy understands perfectly well what a woman's menstrual cycle is, what she undergoes, how her body changes. And likewise for a female understanding that of a male. We continue to look at things in silos in this country. And education is one of the things that we continue to look at in silos as well. And we need to reverse that kind of thinking. There are many women and girls who are not with us today because of violence toward them. There are many women and girls who are not with us today because some boy in school or some boyfriend treated her a particular way and she decided to commit suicide because she didn't know how to deal with it. There are many women and girls who are with us, who are not with us today because they decided they wanted to make decisions about their body. And because certain resources are not made available to them, they went a particular route and they're no longer with us as a result of that. So we have to look at the damning effects that continue to plague us as a result of men not understanding their role in supporting women and girls. We as men have a very important role. One of the things we need to understand, especially when it comes to campaigning and advocacy, is allyship. It's not something you hear much of, but allyship means that you're coming there to oppose an initiative and being an ally. You're not coming to take over. So the perception a lot of times is that, well, hey, if a man leads it, then they might get through. Because he will speak in a particular way and he will command respect and stuff. And we need to prove that that is the case. Allyship is the way that we need to go. So I see myself as an ally. I am not the face of this cause. I am here to support and to bring a particular perspective and to learn at that as well. Because truth is, I don't have all the answers. But I can speak from my experience as a young man in society. I can speak from my experience as well, even being a legislator in this country. And let's take for example the Marriage Act. I had the pleasure, the pleasure of the first bill that I ever debated in this country was on the Marriage Act. And I went in there a bit naive, thinking, well, hey, Trinidad and Tobago is ready across the board and everyone will be jumping on board. And then to hear some of the criticisms at plea, it makes you wonder, what country am I living in? Clearly, none of those arguments could stand that were put up. And we were successful in raising the age. Well, it's no longer a child in this country could get married anywhere below eighteen. And we should be proud as a society that that law has been passed in this country. But it just shows you that there is no struggle or no cause that comes without the headache and the stress and the effort necessary to move it forward. So I want to applaud all the women in this room who have been the vanguards, who have been the ones championing the cause, who have been the ones for years out there on the battlefield, but to some degree only now seeing success. Nothing happens overnight. And I want to say that the young people in Trinidad and Tobago, we are ready to assist where we can because we want a better country. We want a better region, we want a better world. A lot of times they're saying that young people, they're on the outside, think that young people are not capable. Well, let me at least be testimony that we can reach certain places. And I am not the cream of the crop. I do firmly believe that there are many more outstanding young people doing great things, unsung heroes. We just need the opportunity to come out there and to see what we have to do and to get down to the business of it. Previous generations have failed us. That is why we are suffering right now as a country. It's not just because of who this racial divide and all these things. These things go deeper, much deeper. We're suffering right now because previous generations have not adequately prepared the upcoming generations. You see a lot of persons holding on to positions at high office for years. And when a young person finally gets the opportunity, he or she is not equipped enough to take up that role because there was no one before mentoring him or her. So it has to start with us going forward. We all have a role and responsibility where we can allow persons to fill certain shoes, give them the experience, let's do it. And you would see how that would prepare Trinidad and Tobago to take up the position it rightfully deserves. Last thing that I want to speak about really briefly is, we understand or we hear it quite often about the objectification of women. And I alluded to it in the songs that are heard and the images that we see and whatnot. But when we look at slavery, when you first heard about all those boats coming from Africa with slaves in the Caribbean, they were boats filled with men. And they came here and then the slave owners recognized that, well, when these men die out, we have to send for more slaves. And they were doing that for some time. And then they recognized, well, if we bring women here, then I don't have to be sending for shipment all the time. They can reproduce and I have more slaves. And that is how you had women coming into the picture, being objects. Their sole purpose was to reproduce. And apparently, that mindset continues to remain with us to a large degree today. Stay woke, understand what is taking place around us. And it's only when you understand the real issues that threaten our sanity and stability, then you can actually start tackling it. So we have to today resolve that as men, as fellow women, we're going to stand up in support of women and girls, letting them take their rightful place. Because women have a responsibility to, you know, you know, in the workplace and stuff, if this one wants to bring down that one and the other, everyone has a responsibility. But now more than ever, I see where men, young men, older men have to step up to the plate and give women the respect, whether we think that because of their behavior, they deserve it or not, that has nothing to do with anything. We must respect one another. And with those few words, I want to thank you.
We are staying woke. And it is my pleasure to welcome the feature speaker of today's proceedings, a truly cultured man who has demonstrated his ability to influence and mold the minds of many young people under his stewardship as the captain of a large steel pan band. He has been a father figure to many people and managed to command the respect of many young women, young girls, men and boys. He's a former member of parliament for San Fernando West, a former deputy mayor, and now he's the mayor of the city of San Fernando. Please stand as we welcome his worship, the mayor, Alderman Junior Reggelo.
He will be signing on to the global initiative, He for She. And afterwards, he will receive a pin from me as well as to the young gentleman. So we're going to do that now before he makes his statement.
Is it working right?
Yeah. We want the photograph as if you're doing.
Sure, thank you. It's all done. Thank you very much.
And now you will have your pin and then you can make your statement.
Deputy Mayor of the city of San Fernando is Vidal Mongol Bessessa. All the main councilors of the San Fernando City Corporation, members of the administration, independent senator Nikolai Edwards, president of the network of rural women producers of Plant Tobigo, Mrs. Gia Gia Gasputtiello, UNFP director Aurora Norquero Ramquisun, members of the IRO, representatives of civil society, other distinguished guests, members of the media, ladies and gentlemen. I already walked here this afternoon. I could swear that I was somewhere in Holland or riding through Amsterdam. I saw everybody in orange. And I must commend you here for getting us to make the orange effort. As a matter of fact, I got a call from my personal assistant about 5:00 PM and said, I said, "Mayor, don't forget you have to wear orange." This is me struggling, where would I get something orange in my wardrobe? Because everything I have is red, as you would know. However, I used to be, I'm a member of a team that was sponsored by TCL. So I'll give it to pull a polo TCL polo which I'm wearing under my jacket, some part of the orange presentation. But let me extend a warm welcome to you all to the city of San Fernando this evening, along with our title as the energy capital as well as the education capital of Trinidad and Tobago. San Fernando has gained for itself the reputation and the forefront of advancement. San Fernando has gained for itself the reputation and the forefront of advancement. Whether it is technological or societal, our city has always been prepared to lead the way of progress. Our resolve in making is stand on these most important societal issues. But the line this evening is evidence of our determination to stamp out these unacceptable evils. And at this time, I really want to thank Gia for bringing this, giving us this space and giving us this forum and giving San Fernando the opportunity. Because most of these functions are really held in policy. And we as San Fernandoians have this opportunity to, the information that is coming out here this evening is so critical and so important, this topic and what, and what it represents. Like many other individuals, civil society groups and government agencies who have decided to take action at these United Nations initiatives, I wish to publicly resolve the dedication of the council towards the education of the people of the city of San Fernando. The prevention and eradication of all forms of gender-based violence and inequality in our community. In light of this affirmation, I stand ready to table before the council of the San Fernando City Corporation the following. National Disaster Youth Summit. As you would be aware of the ever more prevalent issue of climate change and the increasing intensity of weather patterns, we must prepare our children for the possibility of natural disasters. Combined with Trinidad's location and the activity of the tectonic plates, it is imperative that our children be made aware of these eventualities. As such, we will engage the Ministry of Education, environment NGOs and the services of the disaster management unit to develop our design, a com- undesign a comprehensive educational program. This will bring the necessary awareness to the schoolchildren in various communities of our disaster preparedness and the global issue of climate change and what can be done to address this phenomenon. To the mayor's fund office and in solidarity with many other cities who have pledged their support towards this cause, I stand ready to table before the council of the San Fernando City Corporation the establishment of a fund that will direct target, that will directly target the pressing issues of domestic violence, gender equality and disaster preparedness for youths. As mentioned before, Orange Day acts as a clarion call for all civil society groups and government agencies that only to act once a year on international day for the elimination of violence against women, but to create a continuous awareness campaign focused on eliminating the scourge of violence in our society. Having said that, it is my intention to develop this comprehensive initiative through the council members and the collaboration of the business community of San Fernando. The approach will be engaged, the, the approach will engage the many businesses in each electoral district for a small donation towards an aggregate fund. The council then processed selected applicants in need of assistance with a focus on the tenants of Orange Day, He For She and Every Caribbean Woman, Every Caribbean Child. Towards the woman or the woman who, who needs assistance for rent or who needs furniture as she takes the brave decision to leave an abusive spouse, we need to find a way to address these issues. I recall as a child, a woman saying in my community, if man do beat me, my man will love me. I never knew you've ever heard that statement before. As outdated as it was at the time, we need to eradicate what's thinking. For the young girl who is brilliant, we can't afford school books or tuition or loves better after legs. I've heard those comments. A woman who is an entrepreneur seeking to provide for her family. Then the NGO that requires support to promotional sexual health awareness. This fund inspired by the ideology of Orange Day, He For She and Every Caribbean Woman, Every Caribbean Child will create an avenue of escape for women and girls from poverty and situations that could potentially result in grievous body harm or death. The Sustainable Development Goals of the UN for 2030 are truly intricately embedded to each other and so cannot provide the full potential in isolation. The comprehensive nature of this initiative will be set to aid in the fight against domestic violence and educational campaigns that will ensure that San Fernando will make the necessary stride towards achieving the critical SDG V, which recognizes the importance of gender equality and the empowerment of women in the improvement of the quality of life for all societies. This fund will in essence provide an important vehicle that in time will leave no one behind. Today marks an important day in history of the city of San Fernando as we move towards addressing the civil, social ills of violence against women and gender inequality. Through the guidance and support of United Nations, I'm confident that we'll all make the necessary stride towards the elimination of these terrible acts and create a better society and future for generations to come. In closing, I would like to say that again, I hope that our councillors who are here this evening can take this information and take it into the challenged communities where women have been abused from time and time and time again. This is an extremely excellent opportunity for us to work and I want to thank Gia for giving us this opportunity and to go further to say that San Fernando is strategically positioned for her to move her cause into the rural areas further south, deeper south. I also want to commend Nikolai for representing the UTA this evening with some of his views. And I must tell you somebody, initiatives that you spoke about has been, uh, have been PNM initiatives. Again, I want to thank the audience who are coming out this evening. Uh, this was a difficult project for us to pull off because it's unique to San Fernando. But I'm very impressed by what we saw here this evening. It's hard work to get women to come out on at this time. And I want to congratulate and thank you for making the effort and supporting us on this. And Gia, I want to tell you that your organization now has a home in San Fernando.
Let us again thank the mayor of San Fernando, Alderman Junior Rigolo. And now we have Ms. Kimberly Batiste, who is an engineer at the Kova Tabakital Power Regional Corporation and a representative for the Ministry of Rural Development and Local Government on the SEDAW Committee. Please welcome her as she gives the vote of hands.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am sure we are all riled up right now for gender equality. First, I would like to thank his worship, the mayor Alderman Junior Rigolo. Uh, members of council, uh administrative staff at the city of San Fernando. We would like to thank you for hosting us. We would also like to thank you for engaging the business community to give back their social and corporate responsibility to take uh this initiative further. And I always say that local governments are the people that are closest to the people. They are the first responders that you would see in natural disasters. The regional corporations and the city corporations are the one who really has the impact on the people. So we would like to thank you all for that. Uh, I would like to thank the network of rural women producers who have really been working for this cause, our president, uh, Ms. Gia Gaspar Taylor. Thank you for sharing some of the experiences that you had at the UN last week. And uh, thank you for really launching these initiatives, uh, He For She, UN Orange Day, Every Caribbean Woman, Every Caribbean Child, as well as the UN Youth Disaster Summit. I would like to thank UNFPA Director, Ms. Aurora Noguera Ramkisun. Uh, thank you for highlighting that by making these choices of having a choice. When you can plan your family, now we can have generations where they have a better prosperity because of these simple choices and we can end the cycle on poverty, uh, increase our education. We would like to thank you for really highlighting that point. Uh, we would like to thank Ms. Tonyan Broder, UN Women Deputy Head in the Caribbean. She was risking it with her flight, but we would really like to thank her for shedding some light on SEDAW and showing us that it is legislation and showing us how big of an impact SEDAW can have on it, on us. And it is really the umbrella that guides us to take these initiatives further. Uh, I would like to thank independent senator, Mr. Nikolai Edwards. Thank you for signing up to the UN Women. We would also like to thank the mayor for that. And I hope that many of these men uh in the audience can follow and also sign up to the initiative and we can all stay woke. I would also like to thank all members of civil society who took time off to come here tonight. As well as we have the support of many of our NGOs who are also working for this cause. We would like to thank you for coming here tonight and supporting us. And we would like to encourage you to keep up the good work. And last but not least, I hope I didn't forget anybody. If I did, thank you. But last but not least, I would like to thank the entertainment, uh, Mr. John O'Wark, who pleaded with us to take action and stop the left service. And I don't know about many of you, but after that performance from the trampoline, I have been so hyped. And we would especially like to thank the drummer, Oliver Trias that he had with the flat side of me. I'd like to thank him for still coming here. So I believe there are some refreshments. I would encourage everybody to mingle, mix, you know, support each other with the cause and let us go home and start planning for action. Have a good night, everybody.
Deputy Mayor of the city of San Fernando is Vidiomango Bissessa. Oldman, councillor of the San Fernando City Corporation. Members of the administration, independent senator Nikolai Edwards. President of the network of rural women producers of Plan Tobago. Mrs. Gia, Gia Gaspar Taylor. UNFPA director Aurora Noguera Ramkisun. Members of the IRO, representatives of civil society. Other distinguished guests, members of the media, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, I'm already walking here this, this, this afternoon. I could swear that I was somewhere in Holland or riding through Amsterdam. I saw everybody in orange. And I must commend you here for getting us to make the, the orange effort. As a matter of fact, I got a call from my personal assistant about five P M and said, I said, mayor, don't forget you have to wear orange. This is me struggling, where, where would I get something orange in my wardrobe? Because everything I have is red. As, as you, as you, as you would know. However, I used to be uh, I'm a member of a team that was sponsored by TCL. So I'll give it to pull a polo TCL polo which I'm wearing under my jacket. Some part of the, the orange presentation. But let me extend a warm welcome to you all to the city of San Fernando this evening. Along with our title as the energy capital, as well as the education capital of Trinidad and Tobago. San Fernando has gained for itself the reputation and the forefront of advancement. Whether it is technological or societal, our city has always been prepared to lead the way of progress. Our resolve in making is stand on these most important societal issues. But the line this evening is evidence of our determination to stamp out these unacceptable evils. And at this time, I really want to thank Gia for bringing this, giving us this space and giving us this forum and giving San Fernando the opportunity. Because most of these functions are really held in policy. And we as San Fernandoians have this opportunity to, the, the information that is coming out here this evening is so critical and so important, this topic and what, and what it represents. Like many other individuals, civil society groups and government agencies who have decided to take action at these United Nations initiatives, I wish to publicly resolve the dedication of the council towards the education of the people of the city of San Fernando. The prevention and eradication of all forms of gender-based violence and inequality in our community. In light of this affirmation, I stand ready to table before the council of the San Fernando City Corporation the following. National Disaster Youth Summit. As you would be aware of the ever more prevalent issue of climate change and the increasing intensity of weather patterns, we must prepare our children for the possibility of natural disasters. Combined with Trinidad's location and the activity of the tectonic plates, it is imperative that our children be made aware of these eventualities. As such, we will engage the Ministry of Education, environment NGOs and the services of the disaster management unit to develop our design, a com- undesign a comprehensive educational program. This will bring the necessary awareness to the schoolchildren in various communities of our disaster preparedness and the global issue of climate change and what can be done to address this phenomenon. To the mayor's fund office and in solidarity with many other cities who have pledged their support towards this cause, I stand ready to table before the council of the San Fernando City Corporation the establishment of a fund that will direct target, that will directly target the pressing issues of domestic violence, gender equality and disaster preparedness for youths. As mentioned before, Orange Day acts as a clarion call for all civil society groups and government agencies that only to act once a year on international day for the elimination of violence against women, but to create a continuous awareness campaign focused on eliminating the scourge of violence in our society. Having said that, it is my intention to develop this comprehensive initiative through the council members and the collaboration of the business community of San Fernando. The approach will be engaged, the, the approach will engage the many businesses in each electoral district for a small donation towards an aggregate fund. The council then processed selected applicants in need of assistance with a focus on the tenants of Orange Day, He For She and Every Caribbean Woman, Every Caribbean Child. Towards the woman or the woman who, who needs assistance for rent or who needs furniture as she takes the brave decision to leave an abusive spouse, we need to find a way to address these issues. I recall as a child, a woman saying in my community, if man do beat me, my man will love me. I never knew you've ever heard that statement before. As outdated as it was at the time, we need to eradicate what's thinking. For the young girl who is brilliant, we can't afford school books or tuition or For the young girl who is brilliant, who cannot afford schoolbooks or tuition, oh, love is better after legs. I've heard those comments. A woman who is an entrepreneur seeking to provide for her family, the NGO that requires support to promotional sexual health awareness. This fund, inspired by the ideology of Orange Day, He For She, and Every Caribbean Woman, Every Caribbean Child, will create an avenue of escape for women and girls from poverty and situations that could potentially result in grievous body harm or death. The Sustainable Development Goals of the UN for 2030 are truly intricately interbedded each other and so cannot provide the full potential in isolation. The comprehensive nature of this initiative will be set to aid in the fight against domestic violence and educational campaigns that will ensure that San Fernando will make the necessary stride towards achieving the critical SDG V, which recognizes the importance of gender equality and the empowerment of women in the improvement of the quality of life for all societies. This fund will in essence provide an important vehicle that in time will leave no one behind. Today marks an important day in history of the City of San Fernando, as we move towards addressing the civil, social ills of violence against women and gender inequality. Through the guidance and support of the United Nations, I am confident that we will all make the necessary stride towards the elimination of these terrible acts and create a better society and future for generations to come. In closing, I would like to say that again, I hope that our consuls who are here this evening can take this information and take it into the challenged communities where women have been abused from time and time and time again. This is an extremely excellent opportunity for us to work, and I want to thank Gia for giving us this opportunity. And to go further to say that San Fernando is strategically positioned for her to move her cause into the rural areas further south, deeper south. I also want to commend Nikolai for representing the UTA this evening with some of his views. And I must tell you, some of the initiatives that you spoke about has been, have been PNM initiatives. Again, I would thank the audience who are coming out this evening. This was a difficult project for us to pull off because it's unique to San Fernando, but I'm very impressed by what we saw here this evening. It's hard work to get women to come out at this time, but I want to congratulate and thank Nikolai for the effort in supporting us on this. And Gia, I would tell you that your organization now has a home in San Fernando.
Let us again thank the mayor of San Fernando, Alderman Junior Regalo. And now we have Ms Kimberly Batiste, who is an engineer at the Kuvat Tabakitalpa Regional Corporation, and a representative for the Ministry of Rural Development and Local Government on the SEDAW Committee. Please welcome her as she gives the vote of thanks.
I'm sure we are all riled up right now for gender equality. First, I would like to thank His Worship, the mayor, Alderman Junior Regalo. Members of council, administrative staff at the City of San Fernando, we would like to thank you for hosting us. We would also like to thank you for engaging the business community to give back their social and corporate responsibility to take this initiative further. And I always say that local governments are the people that are closest to the people. They are the first responders, as you would see in natural disasters, the regional corporations and the city corporations are the one who really has the impact on the people. So we would like to thank you all for that. I would like to thank the Network of Rural Women Producers, who have really been working for this cause, our president, Ms Gia Gaspar Taylor. Thank you for sharing some of the experiences that you had at the UN last week. And thank you for really launching these initiatives, He For She, UN Orange Day, Every Caribbean Woman, Every Caribbean Child, as well as the UN Youth Disaster Summit. I would like to thank UNFPA Director, Ms Aurora Nogera Ramkisun. Thank you for highlighting that by making these choices of having a choice, when you can plan your family, now we can have generations where they have better prosperity because of these simple choices and we can end the cycle on poverty, increase our education. We would like to thank you for really highlighting that point. We would like to thank Ms Tonya Broder, UN Women Deputy Head in the Caribbean. She was risking it with her flight, but we would really like to thank her for shedding some light on SEDAW and showing us that it is legislation and showing us how big of an impact SEDAW can have on us. And it is really the umbrella that guides us to take these initiatives further. I would like to thank independent senator Mr Nikolai Edwards. Thank you for signing up to the UN Women. We would also like to thank the mayor for that. And I hope that many of these men in the audience can follow and also sign up to the initiative and we can all stay woke. I would also like to thank all members of civil society who took time off to come here tonight, as well as we have the support of many of our NGOs who are also working for this cause. We would like to thank you for coming here tonight and supporting us. And we would like to encourage you to keep up the good work. And last but not least, I hope I didn't forget anybody. If I did, thank you. But last but not least, I would like to thank the entertainment, Mr John O'Warr, who pleaded with us to take action and stop the let's service. And I don't know about many of you, but after that performance from the trampoline, I have been so hyped up. And we would especially like to thank the drummer, Oliver Trias that he had with the flat side of me. I'd like to thank him for still coming here. So I believe there are some refreshments. I would encourage everybody to mingle, mix, you know, support each other with the cause and let us go home and start planning for action. Have a good night, everybody.